This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, very good. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 16th, and we are at about 6:15. Sorry for the lateness, we've had a couple of technical glitches here, but we should be able to be functional momentito. So while we're getting all that ready, if we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people who stand here as one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a ground.
Good, thank you. All right. So, we have a quorum here in-house, and I'm not sure if Joy's joining us tonight. John is remoting in. We're trying to get him connected, and we have both Reggie and Doug here from Finance, but we don't have a quorum on Finance, so you don't need to call your meeting to order. So, we are up and running. So with that, time for Citizen Speak, which is whoever is up. So, Robert, come ahead.
Recording in progress.
Okay, there we go.
Hi.
Yes.
Robert Floyd, College Highway. I'm back, speaking as Town Moderator. I looked at all the Select Board meetings, recordings, and various committee meetings that involve town meetings, so I believe I'm caught up and impressed. A lot of fine work.
Good.
Just to be on the same page, date-wise, the 23rd is your next meeting.
Right.
And you may plan to sign the warrant then, but you could sign it that Thursday and still post it in time.
The 25th?
Yes.
The latest?
Technically, you can post it on the 29th.
Okay.
I would invite that. I like to have the citizens have as much advance notice as possible, but technically, if you have pushed on the shelf, you could post it on the 29th Monday. Not sign it, but post it.
Yeah, because the one week would get us on this--
But if you're meeting next week, it appears you have enough time.
Yeah, the one week would get us, April, would be May 2nd, which is a Thursday, right?
Yeah, and May 2nd is the Town Moderator Annual Town Meeting Information Session right here.
Right, yeah.
That'll be televised or live-streamed.
Recording in progress.
I'll be here through the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
I think you have to, you mute us.
Thank you.
Hang on.
Whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, boy. Turn the volume all the way down.
Yeah, speaker volume.
There we go, there we go. All the way down, I think. Hopefully, our mics from Southampton Media will pick us up. Okay. I think we're here now. You just gotta admit John, and we'll be all set. Maybe. Oops.
Hello?
There we go, perfect. Wow. Can you hear us, John? He's muted now.
Yes, I can.
You can hear us.
Yeah.
All right, good. Thank you for joining in. All right, so with that, thank you, Robert, for that. I appreciate your following all our discussions while you were out of town, so we will do our best to meet these deadlines, and we're getting close, I think. So, all right, next up.
Good evening. My name is Richard Leclair. I live at 55 Strong Road, Southampton. I'm the past Commander of the American Legion in town. It's that time of year again when I come up and ask permission for the Legion to put on a Memorial Day Parade. It will be the 27th.
Okay.
And I need permission, make sure you ask, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Highway Department, all to help put on this parade. Without their help, it can't get going.
No, that's true. And what time was, were you planning on having it start?
Well, usually it's between 8:30 and 9:00 at Nora School, kickoff at 9:30, and head for the cemetery.
All right, that sounds good.
But you people are all invited without your participation, and bring your families.
Indeed. Okay.
So myself--
At that point, one of my limitations--
Turn that mic around.
Scott. You're getting a reverb or--
Okay.
Either our microphones are collectively too high, or--
Maybe just--
All right, I'm gonna continue. Point of clarification.
There it is.
There we go, thanks for that. Is that better? Hopefully, somebody's--
What's the appropriate title? Commander, Commander Leclair?
Yes, yeah. So, good, well, thank you. Yeah, well, go ahead.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if he was finished, so yes. Go ahead.
Well, I thought I had been cleared for the question. You mentioned the 27th. Is this the 27th annual, or is this May 27th on which you want to hold the parade?
This is the 27th of May. This is where the holiday falls this year.
Yes, sir.
It floats.
Yes, that's the roll of the dice, isn't it?
Actually, the 30th is the--
And I'll bet it's more than the 27th annual parade. So, congratulations on--
It's been many, many, many decades of parades.
Read the 27th.
Yeah, yeah. It's always on a Monday. Yeah. It's the last Monday of the month.
Yeah, it's always the last Monday, so the idea would be to--
It floats.
Yeah, to start gathering at about 8:30 up at Nora School.
Yes.
But the kickoff would be about 9:30 to actually start the parade.
Even if National Asparagus Day also falls on that day, so--
Maybe we can have asparagus float.
Have to endure that.
Ah, there we go. Well, the parade won't last all day long, so we'll have time to enjoy both, I think. How's that?
Now, my request also is for all the people who can't help with putting this parade on, my main sidekick's right here.
You're right, exactly.
She keeps me on the straight and narrow.
There we go, perfect.
But I thank you very much for this opportunity to request this.
Sure. Do we normally take a vote on this, or do we just agree to it? Are we gonna take a vote for your pleasure there? All right, so how about, could we have a motion? Steve, you wanna make the motion?
Yeah, I move that we grant license or permission to the American Legion to spearhead the organization of the Town's Memorial Day Parade on May 27th in the AM.
All right, and Stan, second? All right.
Just to mention, Richard didn't mention that. It starts off at the Nora School, but it does stop at the cemetery. There is a ceremony at the cemetery, and then it leads on to the Town Green where there is another ceremony and a wreath laying. So, just so people know that that's where it starts and that's where it ends, and there is singing at the Town Green, and so traffic does get a little stopped.
Yeah, that's why our police--
Right, chief.
Are always in charge of managing the traffic flow, yeah.
They have big fire trucks involved.
Yes, it's true. It will, it will end here in front of Town Hall, essentially, yeah.
And it usually ends around between 11:00 and 12:00, so.
Somewhere around there.
And the Lions Club provide, well, last few years, they have provided popcorn there for donations, so. All right.
Good, all right.
And we'll send out reminders as well.
We have a motion on the floor.
Motion, second.
And could we have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, and John?
Lumber, aye.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I believe that passes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's granted. Looking forward to it again this year. It was quite a, quite an event last year. We had a big crowd, I think, last year, so.
I'm gonna be sitting on the sidelines.
He's gonna be in the antique jeep.
You'll get a ride.
I'm ready.
All right, good. Thank you very much, Brandon.
Thank you very much.
Can I just speak really quick?
About that, or something else?
No, something else. I just wanted to, yeah, over time. I just wanted to just talk about the caucus. It was Thursday, and we had, last Thursday, and it was attended by 27 attendees. We did have a quorum, thankful the Fire Department was having training. We did have, I think, nine people that were nominated. Thank you. Hopefully, they all got their letters that I sent out, and all of them will accept. Most, a lot of them were for Finance, so that was good. We did get Select Board, we did get Park, I mean, Planning. So, I sent the letters out on Friday for acceptance or decline, so.
Yeah, and if you have a chance, I don't know whether you'd prefer to wait till people accept, but I mean, we should put the results of the caucus up.
I did send a message to Scott earlier, because I didn't think I was gonna be here, because I wasn't here today.
Yeah.
He's had a funeral.
Get it up on the website, so people can--
But then Rich, I forgot about him announcing the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah.
So I will be putting the caucus up, results tomorrow, so. All right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. All right, so I think we're ready to jump, jump in here. Let's do the budget review first and see where we are with this. Given that we've got our Finance folks with us, you may or may not decide if you want to stay for the entire meeting, which will also include the warrant. You're certainly welcome to, but at least to do the Finance part while you're here, and I know John is jumping in from, from farther south, and we appreciate everybody trying to jump in, and then in case those are listening at home, much appreciate that as well. So, now, I'm not sure how much you're gonna be able to see John with this screen. Are you able to? Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, good. All righty. So, Scott, where, where would you like to take us here? This is the one that's the most recent version that got updated in our, in our boxes, so it may not have gone--
So, I guess the best way to start is from the end and work our way up.
Okay.
So essentially, with the final budget, the revenues, there was a difference of $204,600, $968. And then, you know, closing that gap, as I mentioned before, is gonna be a little bit difficult without finding some other revenue, so it leaves us with a deficit surplus of just under $5,000. Two things that just were added in the last 10 minutes was $300 for the Greenway expenses, and a request from the Bylaw Committee Legal for $2,000.
Actually, that wasn't gonna be a requ-- I'll speak for that, because I was part of that with Francine. That was more just noting, it was to try and show Ed how legal would be needed by our committee. So, we were estimating if there were future bylaws, it would be that, but I think we are pretty much done. So whatever we're reviewing right now, I mean, there may be one or two bylaws in the future coming up, maybe, for, for special town meeting, but it wouldn't be that amount of money, I don't think. So, it wasn't intended to be a budget line for the committee.
Okay.
It was intended to go into that overall, whatever, $25,000, $30,000 for legal fees, and just show that out of what we put out for the legal budget, a couple thousand usually is used by bylaws for review. Board of Health would use some, Concom might use some. It was trying to look at sort of building their legal budget from the ground up, rather than just dumping a figure in there. So, so I'm gonna be, and Francine may, may kill me, but I think I'm correct on this. So, I think I'm good. I think, I think we're good. We didn't intend for it to be its own budget line, so I think we're--
Madam Chair.
Okay there, yeah.
Are you saying that the line under discussion--
The bylaw request for legal fees doesn't--
And several other requests for legal fees roll up under--
Other people, I don't think, I doubt that other people put in a budget, a legal fee budget line in their budget, because they weren't, we never have. So, all of that kind of goes into the full figure that we have for legal fees, which I don't think we've actually, we increased it maybe a little bit, I don't remember how much.
The full figure for legal services, which falls in which department?
It comes under, under General Government, I believe.
Right, thanks.
So it's in the, it's in, let me find it.
Somewhere in the 01s.
That's the original budget.
Yeah, it's under General Government. We've got $26,250 budgeted this year, so that's where we are.
Twenty six.
So, so that would, that would encompass anybody that needs legal fees that go through Scott to be able to ask, give you law.
Right, right.
So we were just trying, you know, we'd had a discussion with Ed about trying to break that out a little bit, but that wasn't part of the instructions to committees, so it didn't really get done. But I think as we go forward, it'll be something to look at as we go forward. I don't think we'd need five different legal lines. The intent would be, no matter what, it would all roll into one, but it was just a guesstimate of how we might use the legal services, so. Okay, so I think we might breathe a little bit easier on that one. So, thanks for that. But the Greenway one is a new one, new request then, okay, yeah.
So we have the $15,000 for the wage adjustments, which originally started off at 25. Might be something we fund later on in the year, once we get the actual final report from the Call and Center. We revised the election expenses by $100. Lucy had given us an updated budget. We calculated the additional custodial wages. That was in addition.
And this is to maybe have a few more hours of Dave's service, right?
A little bit more like a facilities manager, rather than custodial, just, you know, things like, like the HVAC, like doing the concrete pad, finally getting a vendor out there to do it, things like that, so.
So some things where we might, over time, we might look at how that could impact our contract costs for some of those building maintenance, okay, things, huh?
We reduced emergency management by $500. We reduced expenses, Police Department by $2,500. We did input the building inspector's salary to reflect where the guidelines were supposed to be. We did reduce the expenses of Highway by $2,500, and the tree warding expenses by $3,000. Right now, they're only at a 30% expenditure for the tree warden.
That's fairly unusual, I guess, because we've had a light winter, because that's a line that usually gets, you know, chomped on quite a bit. Could you make that just a little bit bigger, Scott? Sorry, thank you. So, yeah, so we're kind of, kind of there. You put in John's most recent calculation on the voc tuition, right? We're, we're good on that figure?
Yeah.
The 141, yeah.
And then, just one addition to the Council on Aging expenses, they requested that, $600 for their expenses.
Yeah.
That wasn't viewed, seen there.
Okay.
And other than that, there wasn't many other changes.
So is it still $2,900 over, or just $900 over?
Um, $3,000.
Oh, I thought you took, you took $2,000 off, because we added the legal expenses for $2,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not $900. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you'd, you'd had that at 49, so now you took that back. Okay, all right. Oh. Yeah, okay. So, we're, still gotta do a little bit of shaving here and there. Anybody have any comments, thoughts, questions? John, I'll look to you for a second, since you're hanging in there from the outside.
You have a question. Why are we adding $10,000 to the IT line item?
That's for the, the shared managed services for the new contract.
So that's a contractual obligation?
That's right. That's for the new contract.
Yeah.
It's just a one-year contract?
Yeah. I just go back to, I'm generally opposed to using the $200,000 for the operations stabilization, because we're gonna have to use that year over year over year as a funding source, and I don't think that's sustainable. Now, I understand we may have to use some of it, but some of the requests that are in there, specifically the Board of Health and the Council on Aging are above and beyond previous year's budgets. Have those been level-setted, or are we still automatically assuming we're gonna grant those enhancements?
Put in just now, you've just mentioned $600 on the, the expenses for Council on Aging?
Well, specifically, I've been thinking about it, and I don't just--
Huh? Sorry.
Chris, I don't disagree with this, but specifically, the Council on Aging asking us to observe 100% of the COA Director's wages and the--
Break it, oh, God. They'd also ask for--
Is it the Program Coordinator?
They'd also ask for that. That has not been included. The Director, it looks like the Director's been included, but not the Program Coordinator?
Okay.
So one step forward, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just worried about using $200,000 as a reserves--
I understand.
--without an offset for next year.
But we need to find--
We're gonna have to continue to use those $200,000 every year.
Yeah. Finding places to cut is, is the challenge, though, for that amount of money. I don't know.
Agreed.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
On this, on this point, exactly, there was concern, or there was perhaps a desire to show all of the salary costs on the budget, and then, in these two cases, I thought we were gonna show offsetting revenue in from whatever dedicated funds, state funds, what have you. But given that they're contractual and/or civil service employees, I, I may have dreamt this, but I thought we wanted to show all of that on the budget with offsetting income where that was available. Is that just hopeful thinking?
Um, not totally incorrect. I think if I follow you. I mean, we had done that with the Board of Health contracted expenses, for example, by creating the revolving fund, which is gonna be an article in the Town Warrant. Is that what you mean?
Almost the opposite.
Because that would be--
That was a good financial innovation, and--
Right, so there's--
Documented.
So there's some seed money in there to start that going.
I was thinking about the Director's salary. Or, I lose track of the titles. Director's salary.
Okay. I don't know. But where are we at? I can't see that, sorry.
Well, to the extent that some of the salaries are offset by the state formula, whatever, I would love to see that as an income line, even if it is restricted and matches up with whatever it matches up with.
Well, the only formula grant applies to the COA at this point in time, and I think the request, so there were two requests, right? One was for making the Director's salary fully funded by the Town.
There you go.
And also, and that's that $2,900 right there, and then making the Program Coordinator also funded by the Town. That is not included. That's level-funded. And they did send, I got a note today from, from the COA. They had asked around other communities about how many communities around nearby, or a couple of communities nearby that they were, got answers from, about how they funded their Director. So they got answers from Hatfield and Hadley, and all of them are 100% paid out of the Town Budget. So, for example, Hatfield, the Director's salaries and the Town Budget alone for the COAs, much, much larger, it's like $120,000 that they put in toward the town of Hatfield, which isn't that bigger a town than we are.
Where do they recognize the formula aid that comes from the state?
That goes in from some of their, their other program, from, for building expenses, I gather. I don't know where they charge it, maybe for other salaries.
Well--
But, no, this is, no, sorry. This says her staff salaries are paid 100% out of the Town Budget. Same with Hadley. Staff are paid out of the, 100% out of the Town Budget. So Hadley, for example, that's a Director at 40 hours, one employee at 35, and three at 25 hours. So it must go into building costs or something? I'm not sure.
I strongly support reflecting the entire cost of our employees on Town Budget.
Yeah, I--
And whatever offsetting or opportunistic income we're able to generate, also show that, but that's--
Yeah.
That's from a neophyte first time through.
So I understand what you're saying. So you're saying that really, we're not pulling $200,000 from our reserves, because there's other-- You've gotta be talking to the mic, sorry. Really, we're not pulling $200,000 from our reserves. We have other funds that are coming in from the state for these salaries, these employees' salaries. Is that what we're saying?
It may already be an element somewhere else, rolled up in the cherry sheet reimbursement or whatever it is.
I see.
But we'll leave it to the experts at the end of the table to tell us where.
Yeah. So, I don't know, we'll have to let Scott and Bradley speak to, to that. I don't, I don't know. John, do you have other ideas? I mean, for $200,000, I'm not sure what else is gonna get us, you know, $1,000 here and there is not gonna get us where we need to be, so.
No, but I thought it was $40,000 from our state formula for COA.
It, I don't know, it's a, it's a figure per senior, which--
Okay.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Right. Memory serves, it's like $43,000.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that much, I think.
It's like $14,000, $0.50.
I'm sorry, this is random access memory, but that's what I had in my mind.
So we've got $13,000 for this year. So that's--
Expected income, already reflected.
It's reflected in the, in the expected revenue, so. But that, that right now is paying some of those salaries and, and expenses, so--
Perfect.
The Town is putting in a thousand bucks or whatever toward expenses right now.
Other special revenue funds, that signals that they're restricted for some particular years. I'm good, this is exactly--
That was your question, okay, yeah. So, yes, and so right now, I think what has been put in in the past on that one, if I find the right line here, so the, the Council on Aging expenses, the Town is putting in $1,229 for the year.
How much?
$1,229. And so they've asked for 600 more, so they've asked for $1,800.
Never question whether it's a good value, just whether we had the income and the expense all on the same page.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, it's in the revenue bar.
So, Chris, if I could--
Go ahead, John.
To one of your other questions about where do we find the, the difference on $200,000, one of the reports that just, was just up there showed ambulance receipts were 209, $209,000.
Ambulance receipts.
And I think our budget shows we're only drawing 175 of that to carry over. We know that the, to run the ambulance service in Town is at least $425,000. So even if we pulled 200 over instead of the 175, that's another $25,000 that we pull out of receipts, therefore, we only hit stabilization for 175 instead of 200.
Mm-hmm. So to take a little bit more from ambulance fees--
And I agree with you. We're not gonna find $200,000 in our budget to cut without sacrificing services.
Yes.
But I'd rather drain the ambulance receipts, and I know there's an argument to be made about, we gotta build the reserves, we have to buy an ambulance, and we need all that, but at that point in time, we can do a debt, a debt override if we needed to. But right now, we should not hold those monies in reserves and continue to draw from our, from our internal reserves. So, if we utilize 100% or 90% of our ambulance receipt funds, which the report that was just on the screen showed a 209--
Right.
As of, whenever the revenue numbers are, which, yeah, January 31st, 209, 313, I believe our revenue notes for next year, we only had 175 in there. So I would argue that we should move that to 200, because we have more than that in receipts already. Put that back in, and then maybe we only go to our, to our stabilization for everything else for 175 instead of 200, if that makes sense.
So to take maybe $25,000 out of ambulance receipts, is what I'm thinking, I'm hearing you say, is that right?
An additional, yeah, because we're already planning on taking 175.
I'm trying to think--
If memory serves. I think we have 175 in our revenue numbers.
There it is. That was--
Am I right, or is my memory playing games?
Special Reserve Fund, AQ 68. At 175 for the ambulance fund, that was all we were expecting for--
Right, that's all we're pulling, and we have 209 available.
Yeah.
So I would argue we should pull 200.
Makes sense.
Right? Because, and, and I say we should do that, because we know at a minimum, ambulance service for the Town is $425,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
And it should be, you know, in theory, it should pay for itself. It's not going to, but--
I just calculated the current balance of ambulance receipts.
Go ahead, sorry.
So there was $235,000 at the end of fiscal year '23, and then fiscal year '24, all activity adds up to, let me just check one more time, $36,988. That was $36,988, so that's $272,511, but revenues are only accurate, that was of January 31st.
Right, so we've got more revenues that are, you know, we're behind schedule, which is part of our-- is part of our issue.
Right.
But 236,000 or thereabouts.
172,000.
272,000 exists right now in ambulance receipts. Okay.
And I think that-
Right. So why wouldn't we make that 250?
Say that again, John.
Pull 250 over instead of the 175.
250? Somebody said?
Right. If I heard Bradley saying, as of right now, as of January, it's 272,000 is available.
Right.
Why wouldn't we not pull 250 over, which is less than what's available, and then the difference take from the capital stabilization account or operational?
Okay. Seems like a great idea to me, John. I would ask a question, just because I'm new to this. Just educate me and maybe some people at home. You said that we would have to pull from this fund, these reserve funds, every year going forward. How does that work? And what does that mean? If we pull, say we pulled just the 200K as it was, that number. Does that mean every year, you're stuck pulling 200K from there?
Well, in theory, if you're pulling from the operational stabilization fund, it's because your underlying tax base cannot support what you're doing. Right? Our taxes go up by 2.5%, and then on top of that, we have the new growth, our business. So eventually, it'll catch up. But until it catches up, if we pull this 200 now, or whatever the number is, the X, we pull the X from operational, we have to plan on pulling it year after year after year-
I get it now.
-until the tax base catches up with it.
Right. Thank you very much. Now it makes sense to me. Yeah. And I think, do we not usually, most of our warrants, I'm trying to think, we've usually taken something out of ambulance receipts for-
Agreed.
Huh? Sorry?
Yeah, because, Chris, to your point, we should be, the ambulance program, in theory, although not in practice, should be a self-sufficient fund. So it goes out, it does the calls, it builds the private insurance companies, the money comes in, goes in the ambulance receipt funds, and sits there until appropriation by the select board. So in theory, every year, if we say, hey, this costs 425,000, and I'm just using that as a number-
Yeah.
Then we should have 425 available in receipts to offset this. In a perfect world, it should not cost us anything to operate the ambulance service.
Yeah, in a perfect world. Quite true.
We are using it to pay for any interceptions of ambulance activities from other towns and cities that are helping us. So we do pay out of that account.
For that.
In the current warrant, we have a $3,000 invoice, so.
Right.
When East Hampton has to intercept for us, yeah. Okay.
So I guess that would be a question to Bradley. If there's 272 available, and we take 250, is he comfortable with us leaving, what's that number, 27,000 in there to pay for the intercepts from the neighboring communities?
I think, was it last year, we asked 120,000 from the ambulance receipts to fund the budget? And now we're asking, well, hypothetically, asking more than double, 250,000. And, yeah, I think that's a little high. Maybe 200,000 would be okay, but 250 is a little too much.
The opportunity cost, if we don't just leave this accrued balance in place on our balance sheet, but we use it, what are we missing? The opportunity to pay an unusually large annual bill for other towns to pick up our ambulance, if that's all it is.
Again, our revenues aren't accurate as of today, so I'm sure we have more than 272,000.
We've got more coming in, for sure. I mean, you know, we're four months behind.
Against expenses that are needing to be accounted for, for sure. But they seem modest in comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I would also say, to John's point, to leave the drawdown from the ambulance receipts lower than to just, on a warrant later in the year, ship that over to the stabilization fund, it just seems like you're delaying the application to more fully fund the ambulance program. I'm in favor of what John is suggesting to further allocate those revenues.
We also do have an ambulance stabilization account that I believe we should be, I guess, we need to put money into it. It doesn't just receive money. Money goes to this ambulance fees account. And I believe Ed suggested before he left to place 100,000 into that ambulance stabilization account for possible later purchasing ambulances.
Bradley, is there, what is, is our current balance from that stabilization, ambulance stabilization?
Let me check.
It seems to reinforce a premise that we're not doing damage by using these for operating if there's still some provision for capital expenditures.
I think it's a new, I think it's a new account, though.
New account.
Opening.
At the end of fiscal year '23, there was 94,617.
94,023. Okay. In that stabilization account?
Yes.
For the ambulance, okay. So, for example, last year-
So we're not talking about accessing that. That would be-
That would stay alone. The, last year's warrant for last May's annual meeting, for example, we took out 32,000 from ambulance receipts for the fire EMS operating budget. So we've used it to balance the fire part of the budget much of the time. That was just that one example. But most annual meetings, we've used something from the ambulance receipts, for sure, to help us balance, but.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're doing the same thing now in advance, rather than waiting until the end of the year.
Right.
It's still moving towards, you know, the wage and other expenses of the fire and the EMS department. I think also in terms of flexibility, I think that application and leaving more in the general stabilization fund just provides the select board more flexibility down the road.
I think, aren't they really just the same thing? It's just a different bucket. You still, you haven't really solved anything. You just have more in one stabilization fund rather than the other. So, and I agree with Doug that it's, you'd have more flexibility if you had more money in the overall stabilization fund.
Yeah. Okay.
Chairman, Chair.
Yes.
Another question. Do we, do we have any policies, or do we have an argument why we would use, like to the voters, why we would take a chunk out of the stabilization fund? Is there any reason, other than we really need the money, that you can justify it? Because people are gonna ask, well, you know, why are you taking 200,000 out of this? How much is in there?
Yeah.
How much should be in there?
Right.
And why?
Yeah. I think those are usually the two questions that we might get asked, would be, how much is in there now? And, you know, is that a recommended level? Or are we high or low compared to what should be in there? I'm not aware of any policies or anything from DLS about how much could be, should be pulled from there.
How much is in there in the general stabilization fund?
Operating stabilization?
Yep. Bradley? Those are the numbers. Let that up a little. So... That was one of the original ones that Scott presented, right? 412,000 in the capital stabilization, or operating stabilization fund, I think?
Yes, with the 350,000 due from free cash to replenish what we used last fiscal year, for the last fiscal year.
Okay. All right. So with what John is suggesting and FinCom is agreeing to, what does that, does that help us with our numbers? Are you being able to manipulate the budget there a little bit, or no? On the spreadsheet?
We would increase our revenue estimates of receiving 250,000 from ambulance receipts. So that would increase it. But was it currently 100? What's the current revenue estimate?
We don't have the revenue tab linked to that, do we?
I have the revenue file open.
Or do we? You just have that revenue file open.
So I guess another question for me is, does money go into that stabilization fund during the year, from any source? Or are we at 600,000, we're gonna use a third of it this year, or am I gonna ask to use a third of it the next year?
So we're at roughly 400,000 right now. And then, the town owes itself 350,000 from last year.
From the school.
So once we have the free cash certified, that's gonna move into that fund. So if we don't touch any other free cash, we should be right around 750,000, I think.
That's my other question, 750,000. Is that, is that good or bad, or appropriate, or?
That's one of the things I was, yeah. Establishing a target based on what our budget should be. So that's where we'd be right now.
And I had heard that 5 was recommended, or you said that 5 might be recommended?
At least 5%.
5%, yeah. I think that's usually, well, kind of a, not a rule of thumb, but it's a recommendation, I think, yeah. To aim for that, at least, I think, yeah. So we have a ways to go, but at least if we put that money from the school back in, we're closer to that. So we're getting better at that, maybe. But, but then in terms of shifting around the money from the ambulance receipts, I mean, does that, on your spreadsheet that we're looking at tonight, I mean, we may still need you to still come down to another, you know, 1,900 or whatever, to figure out where to take it from. But I just wanted-
I think 75,000 to the revenue estimates. So it would be 21,049, 21,49,362. 49.
Chris, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, John.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the anticipated revenue from ambulance receipts from 175 to 250,000.
250? Okay. So to increase, I'll just repeat it, so you were a little soft there. To repeat the revenue projection from ambulance receipts from 175 to 250,000?
Right, for next year's budget.
Okay. And could we have a second on that?
Second. Second.
Second? All right. Any other discussion on that?
Just doing the math right now.
All right. Well, let's take a vote then. All those in favor?
I wanna wait until I finish the math. It's part of our discussion. Until our numbers guys are happy with it.
If the numbers guys are happy, yes, okay.
I wanna understand that.
I'm not liking that. Not a clean zero, so I'm not happy.
Got a couple pennies in there?
So in theory, this makes the ask on the stabilization account 175,000, or 125,000, right?
Yes.
Down from 200?
Oh, fine.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, Bradley, you're getting rid of your pennies. Is that what you're doing? All right.
What's the, is the change only 25K? I thought it was more than that.
75,000.
From 175 to 250, right?
Yeah. So wouldn't that drop our pool from that fund by 75K?
Correct.
Okay, down to 125.
Screwed it up.
Yep.
Cool. Got it.
So, I was gonna ask a question, but at the end of, this time next year, are we gonna have more in the stabilization account or less? Because we're gonna use, we're gonna use some, we're gonna use 125. But then there should be, it sounds like, I don't know if it comes from free cash flow or whatever that's called, or-
Out of the ambulance stabilization fund. Is that what we're talking about?
You're talking about next year for capital?
No, I'm talking about the general.
Out of the general stabilization.
We take some out?
Right.
I assume some goes in during the year. I don't quite understand.
Right.
But it's just more-
We've gotta be building, we've gotta be building it every year.
Yeah.
Exactly, right. Some more should be going in.
The repayment of the loan from last year is an interesting concept.
Yeah.
Anybody explain that? I couldn't.
It's a school, first of all, you have the school, you said.
Yeah.
You wanna say it again?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
No, I was gonna say it again.
Go ahead. Say it again. Or John can say. So the concept of repaying the school, we took it out last year.
Well-
The 350 repaid to the school.
Procedurally, procedurally, did we vote on the change?
No, I'm waiting for them to give us the math here. Are we at zero?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Let's take a vote then. All those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Jones, aye.
Lavalley, aye.
Falls, aye. Okay. So it looks like that puts our revenues at 21,049. Our total budget is 21,177,330. So that takes 127,900 and thereabouts out of stabilization, rather than the 200,000.
Right. So to the question about repaying the loan from last year-
Yeah, just to clarify that again.
So, just to clarify, so last year, Hampshire Regional School Committee put forward a budget. Statutorily, the select board is not authorized to change that number. The only thing the select board can do is advocate to vote it down, which we did. And we voted it down by 300 and somewhat thousand, whatever that number was, which we thought was our share of the above and beyond 5% efficiency, or deficiencies E&amp;D certification, which Southampton took the course of. Statutorily, you have to return that money to us. The Hampshire Regional School Committee took a different opinion. So we said, okay, we have to vote on your budget. The law says we have to. So we're gonna vote on it. And we urged our taxpayers to vote it down, which they did. But we're only one of five communities. So in the event that all the other communities voted in favor of it, we had to be able to fund it. So as a placeholder, we said, should all the other communities pass this, we're gonna take this extra money, this 300 and somewhat thousand, out of our operating stabilization fund to balance the budget, to move everything forward. The other four communities ultimately did end up voting in favor of that budget. So we were on the hook for it, even though we voted it down. Even though we represent 56% of that body, we were outweighed by the minority communities and had to pay the bill. So the agreement was, when free cash got certified, we didn't want to hold the town, or penalize the town for this, so we wanted to fit the money back into that account, which is why this is a one-time opportunity to repay that loan, so to speak. Does that make sense, Stephen?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
So my next thing, Chris, is I guess I would ask the chair, is there anything available in ARPA that we could allocate to this budget to further reduce the 125,000 ask now on our stabilization accounts?
Let's see. There might, I know there's, well, I know there's at least 5,000, maybe 6,000 I'm aware of that's back around, but there's probably a little bit more than that. It's probably not a lot. I mean, there might be maybe 15,000 handy right now. I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and check the latest reports that are coming in on that. So many of the big ones, I mean, the ones that finished their projects have used their money. Very few have got a leftover balance to give back to us. And then the big ones that are out there are related to the highway and the water department that are still being drawn down on. So, and also the public safety feasibility study. So there might be a little bit of money out of there, because we did get some state funds for that feasibility study. There might be, you know, maybe 10,000 or something out of that, just to be conservative. So I think we've probably got 15-ish, I would say comfortably, maybe up as much as 25, that we could play with. Not a lot right now, that I'm seeing, though, but-
And how do you feel, how do you feel about the two, the two projects where we have to front the money-
Yeah.
-in order to get the reimbursements? Do you think those reimbursements are gonna come in between now and July 1st? Where we could allocate the money to the budget?
We'd have to check with Randall on that. One of those is that stormwater, or the culvert study that I know Ty &amp; Bond is working on. They are actively out there surveying culverts now, so I'm assuming that they would be putting in invoices. And then once they put in invoices, then we start to get reimbursed. So there may be something that we can start to pull from there. We can check with Randall on that, just to get a sense of where those guys are. That's maybe a possibility.
Yeah.
That's the main one that I think of right now. That's the main one that I think of right now.
But, but I guess I would go along with, you know, if we don't have finite numbers on that, that's okay, but the, what we do, if everybody, if yourself and Bradley feel comfortable that there's 10, 15, or 20,000, I think we identify that as a funding source, and further reduce the stabilization draw.
Mm-hmm.
It's just my recommendation.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. No, I think we can, we can spend some time and take a look at that and see what's coming in, because a lot of the reports, the financial side of ARPA is probably more up to date than the general budget is, I think, right Bradley? I mean, those are, you know, pretty much through March anyway, that you've got expenses on ARPA, so we know which ones are finishing up, and who might have, you know, a few dollars left here and there. I know, for example, on the rehab, on the renovation on the old town hall, there was about 5,000 or something left on that one. So there's, there's a few, you know, small pots of money from different projects, but a lot of them spent pretty much exactly what they planned on, because that's how they came into us with estimates in the first place, but, yeah. Dan?
John, to your original comment that we didn't want to pull from the reserves, because this would be a recurring cost that hits us every year, because these are, these are our charges for our services in town, by pulling from ARPA, that doesn't really accomplish the goal of reducing the overall, the cost for this year, right? It's just technically, it's like another reserve fund that we're pulling from.
Right, yeah, the only thing, Dan, with the ARPA money is, if we don't specifically allocate it to a project by December, it's lost revenue, it'll go away.
Yeah.
We'll have to, we'll have to kind of check back to the federal government.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, I want to spend it, I just wanted to point out that the original purpose of what you said, that, we don't kind of meet the intent of that, so.
Yeah, and we'd have to find which line item, John?
Using ARPA money is just kicking the can down the road for one year.
Right, yeah, and we'd have to find out which line item, John, we'd be, you know, able to use that would be best. I mean, right now, for example, in the budget, we've got the Concom agent in here, and some of the school, the three teachers in there, right? The paraprofessional, and the behavioral specialist, and the special ed teacher, I believe, those are all budgeted out of ARPA now, so.
Well, no, for, no, for next year, we changed the Norris budget, and I gave Scott and Bradley those updated numbers. We took out that 85,000 dollar ask, and we funded it internally through grant money.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, in that case, we may very well have some money then, okay. So for FY '25, there would be nothing, nothing for the teachers in FY '25 then, is that what you're telling me?
Uh, well, just the original six months.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, we'll definitely check it with you before we pull any money, but I, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that might be something that we could have a little bit more money, but then we'd have to figure out which of these things would lend themselves to being an ARPA project. I guess that's the challenge, yeah. Stephen?
This past year, or two years ago, but ongoing, we authorize ARPA funds for IT upgrades here at Town Hall. And I'm wondering if this new contract might be a logical extension of that prior commitment, whether they're unextended funds or not, it's furthering that. And correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe we shouldn't say this in open meeting, this new contract is the first to provide town with reliable backup services?
Yes.
Yeah. It's been, it's been very ad hoc up until now.
I'm sure.
So now there's one, one entity that would be our IT service provider for the year, anyway.
A lot of good employees doing their own thing-
Right.
...and then they retire.
Right, and now with all the systems all tied in with Microsoft, and all the upgrades we've done, and everything else, we've got to have the same, the same people who know how to come in and fix a bug, be the consistent entity to do that.
Requires a level of sophistication beyond what we want to pay for on full-time staff.
Yeah, I'm thinking tied into the IT, though, there may be some ideas there with something, maybe with the Wi-Fi, you know, the town, townwide Wi-Fi, because right, I mean, townwide, town hall-wide, because right now we're not on a secured Wi-Fi. So that's already in the budget, too, so there might be something like that, or even any of the small equipment items for IT, I don't know if there was something there that would maybe lend itself to some ARPA money.
Because it's clearly one-time.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's not necessarily a continual recurring cost, I'm not, yeah, that might be an idea. So we can, we can take a look and see what would be more appropriate there. Okay, not a bad idea. All right, well, I think we're getting closer. So this is tonight's temporary balanced budget, but let's, let's say that we're not done, 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 that there's still going to be another, you know, set of eyes, and look through it again, just to be sure that we haven't missed something, and, you know, all of our formulas track, and we haven't, you know, you know, as we do things on the fly like this, sometimes we might be sure that we get all the cells in, and we haven't, you know, conflicted anything here. But then I'll, I'll find some time to get with Bradley, and we can take a look at ARPA stuff, and see what's, what's possible as well, and then we could maybe reduce that stabilization request down from the 127. John?
Chris, just, I'm not sure I caught the answer earlier.
Uh-huh.
But specifically related to, let's start with the Council on Aging, right? So they, they asked for an extra, right? They want us to fund 100% of the director out of the general fund, which I'm not opposed to.
Right.
But is, is that currently in what we're looking at right now in our numbers?
It is.
That we're assuming 100% of that funding?
I think that's the other 2,900, am I right, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
But just that one position, not the volunteer?
No, that's just the director. So the wage line, they had also asked for the program coordinator, that has been level funded, that one did not get, that's still being funded out of the, part of it being funded out of the formula grant.
Okay, fair enough. And on the Board of Health, the director there requested additional hours that were previously only available through an alternative source of funding, not through the general fund. What is in the budget right now that we're looking at?
I'm assuming it's still the 32 hours, we haven't, haven't approved extra hours formally at all.
She agreed to use the WPAT interest.
Yeah, I'm not certain on what's, what's in that number, though.
So, Bradley, sorry?
She's agreeing to, same thing as this fiscal year, partially, well, mostly out of general fund, but also pulling from the WPAT interest account to fund her additional hours.
But in terms of our, our calculations, it's a 32-hour position, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. As far as I understand, John, yeah?
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that, with that increase there, the 7,000 increase reflects that?
No, it's a 4,967 decrease.
What's the-
Yeah, but 4,000, hold on, though, 4,000, that's almost a 10% increase.
Decrease.
She asked to be fully funded out of the general fund, we discussed with her, and she agreed to use the interest account. So we were moving 4,967, so now we're only paying the 32 hours.
So the 32 hours is being paid out of the general fund, period?
Additional hours out of the interest account.
Yeah, because we've done nothing to formalize that as a full-time position, to my knowledge, right? So it's at 54 now, instead of 52 as of last year? Correct? Yeah. Does that answer your question, John?
Oh, so, all right, so we're budgeting 54, the full ask is 59.
Right.
And we're saying 54 will come from general receipts, and the difference would come out of the abatement trust?
Yeah. Any, any other hours she may be working, she's choosing to do that, but it's being paid out of the WPAT septic betterment.
And I'm fine with that.
But from us, we're, we're still considering this a 32-hour position, as far as I know.
All right, and then my only other question, since I'm remote, is that are we confident that we're going to meet the calculations for the library?
For the library?
In order, for them to get their state funding?
Probably something we ought to just double-check, that one trips us up more than once, so we probably ought to double-check that math, just to be sure, and check it with Johanna, yeah. I still have a, you know, a question on, on a couple things there with that, the lighting scenario, but I think Scott checked that out with her. I was, I was afraid that they were looking also for some money in the budget for their lighting issue that was going to be duplicative of the Green Communities Grant, which has been floating out there forever. So we'll, we'll still just triple-check that, just to be sure, because that could be a little bit of savings if we didn't need to use that.
Right.
Okay. All right, so I think we're pretty good with this for right now, but we've got, you know, still some fine tuning, just to double-check, and, you know, there's, there's always something that escapes, you know, in spite of doing it like this, I think we, we sometimes hurt things that we don't recognize, okay? So is that okay, Scott and Bradley, are you good with this so far?
Good.
Okay, and how about you guys? Good enough for now?
Yes.
Yeah. Doug, yeah, sort of? Question? Yeah?
I just wanted to look again, I have to do this on my own time, but year-to-date at FY '24 expenses. And I guess my one question is, do we have budgeted increases in unfilled positions right now? Where we're talking about moving from stabilization, where we haven't yet been able to fill the rest plus, where we're kind of baking in some increase. And I think that's fine, we really need, for example, the highway department to fill those positions.
Right.
But what I've seen in the past is, we fund at an anticipated staffing level, the staffing does not come in-
Right.
-and then we're moving things around.
We're borrowing from it.
We're saying, not even talking about borrowing from, for example, the stabilization fund.
Yeah.
But later at town meeting, we're asking for wage increases, because it was already budgeted, right? But it was budgeted for unfilled positions, not for spreading across the remaining positions.
Uh-huh.
So I guess that's my one concern, is, you know, we already have, I'm going to call this a shortfall, because we're borrowing from the stabilization fund, should we potentially be adjusting wages that, you know, we don't think is realistic to actually fill those bodies?
Well, the only thing we've been able to do so far, and Scott, you can fill us in more, but that wage adjustment line is a new line this year, where we've just put in 15,000 as something in there to get started whenever we get the final figures on the Collins Report. So it's maybe not the magic number, but it's at least something to get us started, because I think it's going to be, I'd be surprised, depending on what the Collins Report tells us, that we're going to be able to do everything it wants us to do, or we think we should do or want to do within one, one year. It's probably a couple-year process, I would think, but this was, the intent was to get it started. But Scott, feel free to add more about Collins and whatever you think about that, I mean, I don't know.
So I think one of the, the things for a little bit more transparency is to have that additional wage adjustment line item. So we built in the step increases, or the COLAs into all the salaries already, but this would be any additional above that. I, I think your, your concern is, if we have vacant positions, are we, why are we still funding them?
Not so much why I actually want them to be funded, right? But are they, is that level employment realistic? You know, we've had multiple years of unfilled positions, for example, in the highway department, and we just continue to roll that forward. You know, it almost seems like we're looking at, you know, partially at realistic budget and not expense, because we, you know, I guess the question is, do we, like, how many positions, right, are we short at the highway department, for example? And, you know, are we going to actually, you know, anticipate filling those this year?
Mm-hmm.
Right? If we, if we are, then maybe we should reflect, you know, the, you know, the-
Yeah.
-the expected staffing.
Yeah.
And then if we find that position, we could go before the town.
I think that we should also have like an FDE count, a full-time employee, part-time employee count, so that you can actually see which, in each department, what's being funded and how many. I think that might be.
Yeah, because I think if you look at right year-to-date, where we should be at through April, the beginning of April, most of the wage line should be about 75%, right? Give or take. And we have some that are running, you know, some are, you know, explainable, right, at 65%, right, versus a 75%. But some, I think, are at like 45% at times.
Right.
Yeah, I would like to comment, and I think you bring up a good point. If we have open recs that are open for more than, I don't know, three months, four months, we should close them. I, I think that encourages the manager of that department to get the role filled, it also makes us reevaluate what we're trying to do with that position if we can't fill it at that, with those, that job description. So I, I don't, I don't believe in just leaving lingering job recs open. So I, I would ask the question, what, what do we have for open recs? And let's see how long they've been open, and close the ones that have been open for too long.
Well, and, and, you know, if, if part of the issue is, you know, we've been aiming to fill these at a certain level, and we know we aren't able to attract people because the salary doesn't match what expectations are, then are we just carrying that, if I'm hearing you, are we just simply carrying that same thought process through? Or are we intending to bump up some of these unfilled positions so that we can attract new people? And I don't know if you were expecting that, I don't know.
I don't know, because we're negotiating.
No, I know, right. Right, I know, we've got, we've got union negotiations to do, but I don't know if that would come out of the, that temporary wage adjustment line, or, or it would come, that would be where some of that would come from, I would assume.
For the union employees, probably we'd have to do another appropriation at special time meeting.
Okay, all right.
For a, like a regular department head, say, would they need to be increased by $1,000? Wouldn't we just pull it out of that account, or would we have to go to a town meeting to transfer that?
We would be able to pull it out of that account.
We would?
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay.
Can I just clarify what Doug was saying? Is the concern, because in my history, in my experience as well, you do your budget as if all the positions are filled, and you know they're not, because you have to turn over, or you're going to get somebody. So in a way, you're padding it a little bit. I mean, I would always like to access wage-
Yeah.
-wage costs that hadn't come through as a way to kind of fill a budget.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So would you, could you assume a certain amount of vacancy within, yeah, I don't know if that's a good way, I don't know if that's a good way to do it either.
I mean, we've, we've been vacant on some of these positions for so long, and both in highway, and Bradley's assistant in particular, that those are ones that really do need to get filled, so.
But then during the year, do we always use that excess to plug other holes?
Yeah.
That's kind of what it sounds like, the practice has been.
It has been, it has been, I think, in the past, it's sort of-
Often in the same department, hiring overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which makes total sense, yeah.
Yeah.
When that's all you can do. So I think we, to your point, need to fund the whole position.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, well, let's, let you guys work it a little bit more, just double-check on things and see where we go, okay? All right, so with that, let us move off to the draft warrant review, I guess, and see what we have in there. And John, let us know when you need to leave, just give me a high five if you have to go.
We have no executive session tonight.
We don't have an executive session tonight, yeah, so I'm hoping we can be done like in a half hour.
No.
Because again-
I'll second that.
We had thought, we had thought we might be, thanks, Randy, and Doug, too, we had thought we might be close enough to be almost ready to sign this tonight. We're not, obviously, because there's a, a big gaping hole in, in one particular article that we won't have any figures for right yet, plus now that we've got to make these, these changes based on tonight's budget, so. But I think in general, just to look at the articles that are there, and see if anybody has any, any questions about them, knowing that we will try to sign this on our next meeting on the 23rd is the goal, okay? Do you want to make that just a tad bigger?
Sorry.
There you go, perfect.
But I did renumber or reorganize them.
Okay. Okay.
But the, the $350,000 stabilization first. The other thing is, I did, for the Hampton Regional Stabilization Fund, I know that we wanted to put a limit on it, and I think MGL does have a limit, so I just copied and pasted the 5% into that.
Yeah, so John, in case, I don't know how well you can see that, but the aggregate amount of the fund at any time shall not exceed 5% of the combined equalized evaluations of the member municipalities. So that's pretty much the straight MGL language, but we thought it wouldn't hurt to put it right in there?
No, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Rather than putting in a dollar figure, because that was, you know, how do you know? Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have the capital request updated, and each one will have a motion under the article.
Great. I just want to mention that the current balance for the capital stabilization account is $95,000. So if we don't receive free cash for whatever reason, that's the balance.
And that's, that's before taking these out, or after taking these out?
Right now, nothing touching.
Right now, okay.
$95,000.
Okay.
So I do need to update the budget amount. We're going to stick with the same amount for indirect costs in the water budget this year. I talked to, talked to the Water Department, and we're going to kind of go a little bit more in-depth in it next year, to kind of sort that out.
We'll be capping the actual indirect costs, so if it's lower, we'll charge them lower.
Right, and that was, and the same with, did you have Highway there too, or sorry? Transfer Station, same thing?
Yep.
So those are, those indirect costs are fine with Randall?
So with the Transfer Station, we talked about taking out the monitoring cost, and I think we'll be able to do that next year. Jerry was able to find some old language from 1991 about how the costs were supposed to be set up separately. I think probably over the 30 or 40 years, it kind of just got, bone in together because the landfill and the Transfer Station was there, but there's actually supposed to be a separate account for the monitoring account, cost.
That would be under the town budget, normally?
Yeah.
So that should have been set up somewhere back when we converted this to, from the landfill to a Transfer Station. Okay, so that, that might boost our argument then, so that's something that we'll have to research and get done, and probably have to get various approvals on doing that, too, from DEP and whomever else that we have to report to on monitoring, I'm sure. Alright.
So then we have the land acquisitions as well, so we're in negotiations, and that's the big question mark that you had mentioned. Financial transfers were updated and should be.
Just slow down, just a tad bit. So Beck, you had some from the police right before that, sorry?
Sorry.
Right there, okay. Okay. Alright, yeah, and this, I guess this is the best way to phrase this one, this is, you know, again, it's contingent upon receiving these grants, so this could be one. Okay, here's a thought. Back on ARPA land, I see John's got his finger up for a minute, but let me finish my thought. This might be one, if we needed, well, well, it's not in the budget anywhere right now, but this would be something that could lend itself to an ARPA one, but, go ahead, John. John, go ahead.
So my question on Article 13 is, we're taking EMT wages as an offset to the tanker in the SCBA, which, in my view, the tanker is clearly fire suppression.
Right.
SCBA, self-contained breathing apparatus, I would say is firefighter suppression.
Right, right.
I'm just not sure that you can use EMT wages.
Right.
Because remember, what if, the ambulance receipt funds can support 100% of wages of EMT, and EMT money can be spent on that, but when you use EMT money or ambulance wages for fire suppression, it's a violation. I think we're okay here, because if we're truly spending, and this will be a question for Bradley, if we're, in my mind, if we're truly spending $425,000 for EMT wages collectively, includes the ambulance and all that, and if we're only pulling 175, then that means the general fund's picking up the difference. As long as somebody can tell me that $43,500 of this is clearly coming from the general fund, and we're just using EMT wages as a placeholder, I'm okay with that. Otherwise, we're going to get in trouble with spending ambulance receipt money on fire suppression, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, the SCBA definitely would be EMT more, related more so than the tanker would be.
Well, SCBA is self-contained breathing apparatus. You're only putting on a tank if you're going in to suppress the fire.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not going in to pull somebody out and perform cardiac arrest, right?
Yeah, I suppose.
Is that a tanker?
I, you know, to cut to the chase, I think we're okay, because I think we're spending more on general fund money.
Yeah.
To support the ambulance service than we are getting in receipts. I would just want to make sure that we're spending more than $43,500 on the ambulance service to justify the reallocation of ambulance money to pay for fires.
To take that out of that line, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Doug, yeah, question?
Scott, you may want to check on the sheet, but should that read tank? I think those are air tanks, not tanker.
No, that is a tanker truck.
It is a tanker truck.
Yeah, the SCBA are the air tanks.
They were trucking there.
Yeah, you could put a tanker, tanker truck, yeah, maybe it's clearer that way, sure. Yeah.
Right, that's what the 5% or 10% in the event we get it.
Got it.
Okay, so is that?
We were pulling from the EMT wages because there is a big available balance from it, because we budgeted for two full-time EMT.
Right. Yeah, we have that excess right now, because of that, but they haven't yet engaged anyone, so that's why you chose to take it from there?
Right, so last year's budget, again, I'm going off memory, but I'm pretty sure we pulled 175 out of ambulance receipts money last year. So as long as 175 plus 4350, whatever that number is, 43,500, if we spent more than that, then we're good. Right? Because we're showing that we've used general fund money of 43,500. But if we can't demonstrate that we spent that on general fund, then we can't reallocate that right now for next year.
Okay.
In my mind.
Yeah, so you're thinking last, last annual meeting?
I'm pretty sure we pulled 175.
We pulled 125,000 out of ambulance receipts for fiscal '24.
Okay, so 125 plus 43, 5 is 165, 168, 170, call it round numbers. So have we spent more than 170,000 on ambulance services this year? If the answer is yes, then I'm okay with that 43, 5. If the answer is no, then that means we're using ambulance receipt funds to subjugate the fire suppression, which we're not allowed to do.
Okay, so something we need to double-check on then, okay? So let's highlight that one or something, Scott, so we know we've got to come back to that one. Thank you, John, for those points.
As a, as a new, or someone outside, I would say, what's an SCBA? Somebody just spell SCBA.
Self-contained breathing apparatus?
I know what it is from sitting here many times.
Oh, it'll be in the, in the summary.
Yeah, great.
This is just the actual article, so there'll be a motion and a summary written in for the residents?
Cool.
And all of that will be, all the rationale will be there and explained.
English, good stuff.
Yeah. Okay, so, Town Hall Maintenance, okay. Alright. Trying to find this.
Nothing has changed for three out of the four so far, so we got approval for two of the bylaws. One change, we're still waiting for the nuisance. We did get the feedback from.
I think you got nuisance back, that one didn't have any changes.
Oh, I might have switched them, yeah.
Tag sales, I think, yeah.
Tag sales, right, sorry. So we did get the feedback from the Board of Registers, from Town Council, and they wrote some changes, so I know that they're going to be meeting.
Registers meet tomorrow.
Right, tomorrow. So they should be able to review it, accept it, and then, this reflects the proposed language, but I can change that as needed.
And it was mostly just putting in more references to the Mass General Law Chapter is all that they wanted in there?
The basic principle and changes were approved by Town Councils, just to enforce a few things.
Right, okay.
Motor vehicles did not change. I included the zoning articles right after the bylaws, right before the CPA. And for the revolving funds, the first article is the health inspections that we've added this year. And I added, if approved, and I set a limit of 60,000, I know that we had estimated about 55,000 for revenue, so we can do less than that, but.
Just a question on the revolving accounts?
Yep, go ahead.
Regarding the first time that we're creating the Board of Health, should we put it in language that creates that seed funding, that initial funding of 10,000 or, I think we, I think we said 10,000, right?
Yeah, we put it in the budget, but are you asking whether we should put it in the article?
Um.
It's in the budget.
Yes, I was, but if it's in the, never mind, moot point. I'm good.
Okay.
Why are we, why are we putting on bylaw about tag sales? Why do we care about that?
Well.
How does that help our town?
There are various bylaws that, that need to be updated, there's others that residents ask us to draft. Noise and nuisance is one.
So this came from the Bylaws Committee?
Yes, yeah, no, these are drafted from the Bylaws Review Advisory Advisory Review Committee.
So townspeople came to the Bylaws Committee and suggested this?
They've come on the, they've come on the nuisance one, they've come on the unregistered vehicles one, I don't recall if anybody came on the tag sale one, no. That's been more.
Well, I think regarding the tag sales, there used to be a procedure in place, you had the redshirt police department.
Yeah.
And then it kind of like just fell off the radar and disappeared.
Right.
Right? And this is just putting it back on.
Yeah, I question the benefit to the townspeople, so I want to ensure that the Bylaws Committee has thought this through by adding this.
Well, it asks, it asks for a permit to be taken from the town clerk's office, and then a small fee to be paid to have a tag sale.
Yeah, but do we have problems with tag sales? It's like adding an extra law, beneficial?
Well, if people don't agree with it, they can vote it down, I mean, that's.
But why, where are the select board, why are we suggesting things?
We'd already gone through this, we've approved the drafts of these bylaws at one point in time.
Okay.
Because they wouldn't have gone to KP Law first.
Well, okay, so you're saying we can't bring it up?
They can be, I mean, they could certainly be voted down at town meeting.
Do I, as a select board member, have the ability to not approve these? Or any of these items?
Well, I think we're past that point now, because we're, our next step will be approving the warrant itself.
You've had a vote on each of these articles, right?
These came before the select board at various times, at different meetings, yes. Not all in one meeting, but over, over several meetings, yes. We can go back and figure out which day that was, if you want.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Would have been within the last two months, for sure.
Okay.
Would you like it removed, is that your point?
If I can't say anything, I can't say anything, it's fine.
Well, no, I'm.
I would have liked to have been involved in the discussion, but if the discussion's already occurred, and you've already, as a board, made deliberated, deliberated on it, then.
We can go back and check that?
It's all good.
Okay, we can go back and double-check it, but I know it came before the select board.
Yeah.
Alright, so that gets us down to how many articles, 27-ish, their amounts? So that, with the combination of putting the, the 27, 20, so what about this, the spending limit one? We should, I think, put in the spending limit on the Board of Health one now, right? And so, Scott, you put that in basically to make that a self-recurring, whatever, cost, covering cost of the inspection service that we currently have, essentially.
Right.
So you're saying, which ones haven't we approved that we're still talking about?
I'm just looking at the.
Just that one?
I'm just looking at the Board of Health inspection services, the amount of whether, that amount on that one, we're creating this new revolving, revolving fund now.
Yeah, yeah.
With the article right before it.
I'm just kind of going back to the previous statement, that we've already approved these, right? So which ones are we still looking at? Because I had mentioned the tag sale one, we said it's already reviewed and approved, and so we're not talking about it, or?
So, we've gone through that one as an individual one, so it has to go through us first to get it to KP Law to review.
So all of them have been, or?
KP Law reviews all the bylaw ones, and then, at some point, Scott, will send the full draft of this, but our overall goal is to, at this point in time, is to sign off on the entire warrant and say, this is what we're bringing to the town. So we're, I mean, if people have questions on articles, now is the time to do it, yeah. But we had taken a discussion on all of the bylaws as individual bylaws over the various meetings.
Okay, so.
I would have to find the dates for you, but.
Anything with bylaw, you're saying we've already approved? Are those ones we're not?
It cannot have gone to KP Law without it having come to select board first from the bylaw committee.
So that helps me understand which ones we're addressing here.
So, but just back on this last one, are we comfortable enough with this 60,000 figure for the inspection services? It's a lot bigger than anybody else's revolving fund, so, but it has a rationale behind it, I think. John, anything, I think I saw your hand, or?
Yeah, I would just say, well, two points. One, first on Dan's point about the tag sale bylaw, is, yes, the bylaws came before us, and we were not unanimous in supporting all the bylaws that were on there. And to his point, if he feels, you know, that he doesn't want to support tag sale, then he can certainly vote against that individual article right now.
Yeah, I guess I was asking, the train's already left the station, I don't want to go back and.
No, no, you should use, you know, we don't have to be unanimous, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 but it's already, it's already.
I believe, you know, Counselor or Select Board Member Piper was against it when it came before us.
Yeah, I think she did not, she was, you're right, she was not in favor of it.
Yeah.
But just a question, when we come back to vote on this on the 23rd, because we are not making a vote on this tonight, tonight's a discussion meeting, when we come back to vote on this on the 23rd, we could take each article one by one, rather than taking the warrant as a lump?
Okay, well, we're not, I guess my question was, are we having discussions on these? And they kind of went back and said, no, we're not having discussions on these, we've already sent these off.
We had a discussion on this, you were not there for the meeting, I think. So that's why we're hearing you now, to have you say that you don't seem to think we need the tag sale bylaw.
Yeah, but my point is, are we, are you bringing up further discussion, or is it closed? If it's closed, it's closed, you know?
I wasn't planning to bring it up for further discussion on one particular article.
Yeah, so that was, the question was, which ones are open for discussion? You said anything that's not a bylaw, anything that's not a bylaw, right? Those ones are already, those ones, we had to bring off, but the other ones, we want to talk about and.
I mean, any of these that we're not agreeing with the language are, this is the discussion time tonight, so that we can sign these, hopefully, on the 23rd when we get back together. Usually, I think I'd have to go back and check last year's meeting, but I think we've done, we've read out the warrant and, and basically approved it and done one lump vote on it. I don't think we've gone down as a select board and voted each of the 27 articles in order to put the warrant out for posting. So when we get together on the 23rd, we would go back through these and make sure that they all say what we want them to say, and then take a vote on approving the warrant for the town meeting, is my recollection of how we've done it in the past.
So two, two things.
Yep.
Well, one, Dan, I thought the tag sale was a kind of simple thing, but I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts on why we shouldn't have it. And the second thing is, the Board of Health, $60,000, if they're only averaging $12,000 a quarter, that's $48,000 a year. I'm not sure that 60,000 is an appropriate level, however.
That's what we're paying now for contracted services, I think.
Well, so that's where I was going with this. As long as it's understood, and if there's a memo of understanding between us and our contractor, that they're only entitled to bill for services that we actually collect, I don't want to create a situation where they perform services and the, and the individual taxpayers have failed to pay, and we end up on the hook. I'm not sure how to resolve that particular issue, maybe it's just part of the contractual service they have as a 1099 employee with the town, that they understand that we only pay when we get paid. And that may already be in place, in a formality, but I would just want to clarify, I'm okay with the higher limit of 60,000, as long as we're not on the hook. If the service is provided and the resident doesn't pay the bill, it's not up to us to make the difference. When we get paid, the contractor gets paid.
I mean, I think that might be, in general, a good idea, but, you know, we have certain instances where we have property that's significantly, I guess, you know, the condemned property right now in Cold Spring Road, you know, we probably won't see that money for a while, if we see the money, but it looks like we probably will, but that's one of those things where we need to address it, whether or not we do or don't receive the, the money back for the services.
Currently.
Right, and I'm good with that, Scott, because I understand that, according to our health director, 10 to 15% of the services rendered would never be recuperated anyways, and the town has to make up for that difference. anyways, and, and the town has to make up for that difference. So I'm okay with that. But, but in general, or the 80/20 rule, right? Eighty percent of the time, they're going out to perform a septic system test. It's because somebody wants to build a house, they're going to pay the bill. I get it, if it's in tax title, or delinquency, or someone's filed a complaint, that we may be on the hook for that, to provide the service, but I'm just saying, in, in general, I don't, I don't want all of a sudden to have a, we run the bill all the way up to $60,000, and we only have $30,000 in receipts. That means the general fund is on the hook for the other $30,000.
Yeah. No, I, I think the intent is not to do that, right? But, yeah, there may need to be something, I don't know, we don't, we ourselves at select board level don't have the contract. It's between the Board of Health and, and the health agent, so, I don't know how we would make that clearer, but.
We have electrical inspections and plumbing inspections as revolving funds, and every time we pay the plumbing inspector or electrical inspector, I check the turnovers to make sure that we actually receive the money from their services before we pay them.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know if we can set up something similar with the health agent.
Sounds like if you've got a practice to do that, then that should be able to be translated to cover also for the health agent services, I would think.
Right, and I would just reiterate, you know, what was it, 10 years ago, this was the norm, there was a revolving account, and for whatever reason, our predecessors, former select board members, decided to do away with that. We're bringing it back, I just want to set the playing field equal to start with.
Yeah.
Here are the rules of engagement and the expectations.
Okay. Well, I think it would have to be something like what Bradley has just said in terms of his, his review of receipts and so forth, and, and looking at that versus the invoices, and if you've got a system already in place, then that just needs to be made known, I think, to the Board of Health and the health director as well.
No, agreed, and I, I would go one step further. Get the contractor to sign off on it.
Yeah.
As a contractor, as the independent 1099 employee.
Yeah.
You understand, these are the rules of engagement.
Okay.
Yep.
We can certainly try to make that happen. Again, the contract is, you know, not signed by us on this one, so, okay. All right, so that's the bulk of it. So Dan, yes, we've, thoughts about the tag sales, while, while it's on your mind?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts on the tag sales. I guess my first thought is avoiding over-constraining our, our town residents. I see for a fee of $5, we're going to be using our police force to enforce, to enforce something that I, I don't really understand the benefit of. I look in, I look to it as, as, as over-regulating ourselves, in terms of, you know, I look at, as some communities have homeownership associations, and what they can and can't do in their own property. I, to me, I, I don't think that it's, it's our right or our ability to say what those people are doing, and for it to collect $5, I don't think that's really worth it.
Well.
So I guess I'd love, I'd appreciate, I'd love to, I, I would love and appreciate to hear what the, what the purpose of it is, like, to me, just, it seems like a waste of time.
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, the, our colleague was not present for the discussion and vote on these bylaws. I'm confident that the work done by the Bylaw Committee was thorough and responsive to actual input from town residents. In approving the warrant with these bylaws included, I'm voting in support of the process, not necessarily every decimal point on every line item, or even, I reserve the right to vote against a bylaw at town meeting, but we're at a point of moving the process.
Yeah.
And I have total confidence that the process has been appropriate, though I'm not enthusiastic about some of the bylaws myself.
Yeah, okay. Well, and, and to say, the Bylaws Committee, so the, like, with the assessing, I'm sorry, with the registrars, the one that's there, so those have got comments now back from KP Law, so that's going to go back to the Board of Registars to take a look at.
Mm-hmm.
And should they have any, you know, reservations, then, you know, we'll get back in touch with Scott about those. That may or may not end up back at the Bylaw Committee, okay? The one that we have not yet heard from on tag sales, is, sorry, from KP Law, is on tag sales. We don't have their comments on tag sales at all yet. So depending on when that comes in, we could be at a point where if it doesn't come in in time, we might not be able to get it on this warrant. If we don't have their comments, it could be pulled off and put on, if decided, for a special town meeting, or maybe, you know, not at all.
Yeah.
So, but this is the one bylaw where we do not have comments yet from KP Law.
That's good to know.
So one would assume we'd get them in time. They're usually, you know, KP is pretty good about that, but that could be one. But also, Bylaws is having a meeting, I think, on the 20, 25th, if I'm not mistaken. So it's something, too, that we could, you know, bring back to the Bylaws Committee and just raise concerns and just ask for more.
I, I appreciate, you know, especially what you said, Stephen, you know, you bring up a good philosophy. Are we, are we the conduit from the, say, the, the Bylaws Committee to the townspeople?
Right.
To pull the, to pull the, the warrant together, such that what, what the Bylaws Committee suggests is a basic pass-through for us? Where, is it our, is it our right or our role to, I guess, critique the work of committees?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're an appointed committee of, of the board, I mean, so they work, you know, in concert that way.
Yeah.
And a few of them, I will say, there's not been, in a couple of, like, the, I think it was the one on humane care of animals, if I'm not mistaken, the nuisance one, and the soliciting and canvassing ones. Again, most of these had been asked for by residents at one point, or a resident by one point.
That makes sense.
Those, we felt, the bylaw, and I'm part of the Bylaws Committee, so.
Okay, cool.
We felt were going to be probably very controversial, so we offered a timeframe for a public meeting.
Nice.
For townspeople to, you know, join in on a Zoom meeting, or come in person, and I think we had maybe three people come. So we haven't had a lot of input from town. We did not have a town information session on, on, we did on the registered vehi, unregistered vehicles, we did not do it on the tag sales.
But that, the root, is the root of that one from a suggestion from the town? People were from the, the Bylaws Committee itself?
Someone, at some point in time had asked, and, yeah, I'm not saying there was a groundswell of people, no, but at some point in time, there would have been a request about.
Okay.
Looking at a bylaw, and, you know, why don't we have a bylaw for tag sales, kind of thing.
Okay.
So, but it wasn't, it wasn't because it's necessarily causing traffic jams or anything else, although there are a couple of locations in town when large tag sales happen. I think that might be a possible problem traffic-wise, but it's not because of a traffic concern that got raised or anything like that.
Yeah. I get, my, my other concern around is, I, I don't want people pushing the tag sales too far, where we have a lot of people who have small agricultural businesses, where they sell eggs, or fetch farm stands, and.
That's not a tag sale.
People misconstruing what a tag sale is, so I, I kind of want that to be.
Sure.
Stated, you know, that's not a tag sale, so we're not fearing with their agricultural, small businesses.
That certainly would not be the intent. So if, yeah, so maybe there needs, you know, if there needed to be another definition, that could be looked at. But again, I think I'd rather just say, let's, let's wait until we see some comments back from KP Law, which we should have before Tuesday, and depending on those, we can, you know, decide at that point in time if we want to hold that one back. We can take it off the warrant on next Tuesday, bring it back to the Bylaws Committee, you know, if that's the decision of the board at that point in time. Okay. All right, I think that's good enough for the warrant for tonight. We'll come back on it on Tuesday. Yes, Robert, please.
Thank you. Robert Floyd College. I speak as town moderator. If the, if we need a second night, do we have a second night proposed the following evening or the next Tuesday at the school?
For the town meeting?
Uh, yeah, if, if, if it's adjourned, or it runs over to a second evening, what, what evening?
Yeah.
Do we have?
Did you reserve two?
Reserve the eighth.
The next night?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make a recommendation on the CPA articles. I like to see that fourth one to be the first one for the CPA articles.
The overall.
Because generally, the overall, because generally, there's a lot of questions anyway, how much is in this fund, how much is in that fund, and having that first article, historically first, answers a lot of questions that I think would come up and might save us some time.
Good point, yeah. Yeah, that is true, that is the usual order in those, that's correct.
Usually the same questions every, you know, every year.
Yeah, how much is in the, the various, you know, various pots of funding that's available there? Yeah, that's.
And it's a good entree to explaining the purpose of, of the CPA.
Right.
And to prove that I was paying attention and watching all the meetings on the recordings, there was a discussion about changing the format of the budget.
Yeah.
And I thought about that quite a bit, many, many days, and I went back and forth. I can't support it because I believe it detracts information from the voters, and it's their money, it's their budget, and I believe they need to see all the line items. But I am moved by the discussion that John had with Ian about, and, about picking on Ian, but he gave that as an example of, if he has a particular need, he may have to come back to a special town meeting. I'm sensitive to that. Is there a way that the town can see the line items, weigh in on them, but when we actually vote, we're only voting on the lines for a department and not all the line items? Does that make sense?
Yeah, a lot of towns will actually have that big general.
Yeah.
Bucket, but then they'll actually list, you know, advertisement for employment, medical expenses, pre-employment physicals, that's how we used to do most budgets like that.
All right, we'll talk, we'll sit down. I'm just sensitive about taking away transparency, especially when you're going to be asking them for votes on big projects.
Well, and I think at this point in time, I think you and I have talked about wanting to do that, but probably not getting it for this town meeting, right?
Right.
I mean.
Okay.
I think it takes more.
Yeah.
More preparation on, on doing that, but I, I think we're on the same wavelength to try and get that done and make it much easier for department heads to.
Our budget discussions and votes have been extremely smooth, more so than 90% of the towns I know about, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And I believe it's because we put all the information out there. They can see it.
Yeah.
I think when you take it back, you're wondering, and it sets up a mistrust, if you will.
Well, I think at least to get us through May, we probably have to do this the way we usually do.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean that we can't work toward changing that and making it more consolidated so that everybody understands, you know, here's the main categories of the budget underneath here.
I think we vote on that, that's fine, but I, I think they knew, need to have the ability to sink their teeth in.
Yeah.
And giving that ability, they sometimes don't take the, the move forward to do that, so I think, okay.
No, valid point.
Thank you.
All right.
Cheers.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're done with the warrant part, so I think we just have two other items here. Last meeting, we had two, in an executive session, we had two, two discussions and came out of that with some decisions. I think we took a vote, and so I think, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I have here, just to announce that we have offered a contract to Chief Richard Frasoli to be the permanent fire chief. This would take effect from the day that we agreed on the appointment, which goes back a few weeks, I think.
Yep.
Two, three, three weeks, maybe, thereabouts, where we offered him the appointment, and it would go, it's a three-year contract until 2020, June, June 30th, 2027, and it would start off its annual salary for the three years, starting at $102,500, going to $105,000, and then going to $107,500. And as usual, our typical clauses in his contract, I believe it was 20 days vacation time, five days personal time, regular sick leave, as per the Personnel Manual, I think those are the, the highlights of it. But just to say, we hope to get that signed soon, and he would be starting as of?
Uh, April 22nd.
April 22nd, okay, so he will be our full-time permanent fire chief. So, again, congratulations to Chief Frasoli.
Chris?
Yes.
Chris, I would just clarify that he would also be the Emergency Management Director.
Correct. He's also the Emergency Management Director, that is correct. Thank you, John. So that takes that off of Scott's head. He was the temporary EMD. Yeah, so actually, the fire chief is the fire chief and the emergency services manager, if you will, and the Emergency Management Director as well. So all of that together, so fire, EMT, et cetera. And the second one was about land acquisition, where we'd been looking at property that has been known as Zero College Highway, now being known as 117 to 125 College Highway. And again, this is the property, the open land that you see as you drive toward East Hampton, right across from Dowd and Parker O'Grady Cumberland Farms area, and had been looking at that for a smaller, a portion of about four acres that might be donated, and a portion of it to be purchased for the public safety building complex. And then in our discussions, and also came out at the public forum the other night, that there are many potential uses for that land. The landowners are willing to sell us the entire property and not just the four or five acres that we had originally been envisioning. So as a select board, we have taken the vote to try to go for the entire purchase, and Scott is in negotiations at the present time, and hopefully will conclude that before we need to sign the warrant, okay? So that's where we are on that. So we are going to be trying to go for the larger parcel, which is around 54, 56 acres for future use in town, knowing that there's many, many uses that have been identified already, and more that would be, have to be, you know, really thought out and planned. But the essential thing is to be able to acquire some land that is available right now, and see if we can make that work for us. So that's the goal, and Scott will let us know when he's finished with some negotiations, hopefully in the next few days, or by our next meeting, with a little bit of luck, okay? All right, and then other than that, any other business before our next meeting, which is going to be Tuesday? Nothing? Offhand, anybody? All right, well, if not, I think I will ask to have an adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All right, Stephen and Dan.
Aye.
Hold those in favor. Aye?
Aye.
All right, John has left, so I guess I'll be the third. Aye? All right, and thank you, everybody, for hanging in there, and we will call ourselves adjourned right at 8 o'clock.
There you go.
Kind of as promised, how about that?